Good evening, my name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Joseph Campos. Paul Mendez.
Present.
Ty Jennings.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Madam Chair, there are members and we do have a quorum.
The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would ask you to silence your cell phones and prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at the time regarding any of the items on the agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Mendez. I'd just like to have it known that I own a duplex in the City of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mendez. Otherwise, we have no other declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We value your input. We as the Planning Commission need and value it. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get the facts and opinions placed into the official public record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes from the October 15, 2020, meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Campos, I shall move to approve the meeting minutes for October 15, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Great. So, it has been moved by Commissioner A. Campos, second by Commissioner Handler. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. Next on our agenda, we have old business, but I don't see any items regarding that, so we will move on to public hearings. The first item is a code amendment, which is a request for House Bill 1923 regarding duplex, triplex, etc. And this is MF #2020001. We will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The two public hearings on tonight's agenda will be on the ongoing efforts to implement code amendments associated with House Bill 1923. Staffs presented on House Bill 1923 at various meetings dating back to March of this year. And just as a reminder, in September of 2019, the Pasco City Council authorized staff's intent to adopt three code amendments associated with the bill. This slide is some background on the legislation that was enacted by the state in the summer of 2019. It's an effort at increasing the urban residential building capacity throughout the state due to the need for increased housing. Became effective in July of that year. There was 13 options for cities to choose as part of an incentive program to address housing affordability. Pasco selected to intend to adopt three. As part of that agreement, Pasco will receive grant funding to reimburse for staff efforts if all three are adopted based on the funding made available by the Washington State Department of Commerce. So the first action, these are the three actions that the City Council has approved staff's intent to move forward with, and we'll focus tonight on the first two. And for this item, action number one, which is the authorization of a duplex, triplex, or a courtyard apartment on each parcel in one or more zoning districts that permit single-family detached units. So a little bit more about this specific item is on the following slides. You can see here that, again, this is for the authorization of duplexes, triplex, triplexes, or courtyard apartments. And the legislation does allow the city to provide information or documentation that cites specific constraints that would not make this feasible, so that it isn't applied without any sort of analysis. This allows us to do that analysis before moving forward with a recommendation. This staff does intend, believe that this adoption would require modifications to the Pasco Municipal Code, specifically Title 21, which is our subdivision regulations, Title 25, the zoning designations, and specifically with the development standards and the residential zoning districts. I think also to follow up with the intent of this proposal is that it is in line with many of the very recent adoptions made by the Pasco City Council through the comprehensive plan specifically in the housing element, the legislation itself, which is part of the Growth Management Act. Also, as a reminder, that the City of Pasco is a member of the Tri-Cities Home Consortium, which develops a series of strategies and implementation measures, one of which is increasing the diversity of housing stock in the region. And also the recent council goals adopted in September, which intend for staff to begin working on the Housing Action Plan, which these amendments will likely feed right into. So a little bit on the policy background, and the screen before you right now shows the existing residential zoning districts. RS20 are lowest, which is the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, all the way through R4, our most, our highest density zoning district. You can see where these units are allowed and where they are not allowed currently. And also want to make mention that there are some areas of the city that this amendment would not be applicable to, that would be existing planned unit developments. And also those subdivisions and developments with existing covenants, conditions, and restrictions that would be, that would make this amendment not compliant with them. So we certainly don't want to revise or change any of those. So this is the current residential, this is the zoning district map for the City of Pasco. And as we can see, 84% of all of the residential zone land, the land use, is zoned for low density. 87% of Pasco's population resides on 26% of the city's designated land area. 13% of Pasco's populations, which is those that reside in multifamily units, are on less than 1% of the city's total land area, so somewhat of a disparity there. Again, this is the existing zoning district map for the City of Pasco. This slide right now shows you where the multifamily units are currently allowed and not allowed in the City of Pasco. So, right now, multifamily is allowed in 16% of the city. Multifamily is not allowed in 84% of the city, you can see that in black, obviously. There is some geographic constraints, but also we can see exactly where these units would not be allowed today and where that may cause a problem as we look to increase population by thousands over the coming years. And also keep in mind that throughout the comprehensive planning and urban growth area efforts by the city, we did conduct a land capacity analysis based on assessor and parcel data. And that analysis indicated that of all the vacant residential land in the city, which is approximately 560 or so acres, 95% of those vacant acres do not permit multifamily units. So, on one end of the spectrum where the city is trying to increase the housing diversity in the city, our zoning code just doesn't allow it. This is a slide that we've shared at prior Planning Commission meetings. This is a comparison of 14 cities with occupied housing supply. You can see that Pasco has the second most that reside in single-family detached units, and also the second highest of those living, that's 9% of those living in housing units described as RVs, boats, or mobile homes. So with this graphic, and it's not, obviously not all the cities in the state of Washington, there's some larger cities such as Spokane, even Salt Lake City, just to provide some comparison for us to take a look at. But obviously what this shows, along with the map shown in this slide prior, is that Pasco does not have much opportunities for multifamily units specifically on larger apartments. So, House Bill 1923 and this amendment itself is aimed at trying to address that by reallowing many of the units that exist in many cities across the country and allowing them to be built again. So the next few slides show a few examples of what this actually looked like today from the street view. So what you see on this screen are a set of duplexes or zero lot lines. Zero lot lines are units that share a parcel boundary and also share a wall, as you can see on the left, but from the street view, they look like a duplex. On the right, you see some, both of these, by the way, are in the City of Pasco today. So just an example of duplexes here in the city. And there's some more examples here of older duplexes. And on the next slide, you see a little bit more of a modern version of a duplex and also a courtyard apartment, which is a, which is a set of units that are attached but share sort of a common open area, green space, recreational area such as that that you see on your screen in front of you right now. And some more examples of a larger courtyard apartment. Obviously, that would be one that would be typically reserved for a higher density. And what you see on the right is triplex townhomes, which exist today in the City of Pasco. So those are the kind of units that aren't allowed in 84% of the city. So this is illustrative only, but shows sort of a description or an illustration of what these units look like in terms of a parcel boundary. So you can see that you've got two units on one lot, three units on one lot would be the triplex. A very basic version of a courtyard apartment on the right. And on the bottom left, you can see a zero lot line example, which is two units that share a lot line and wall, but on two separate parcels, which is very similar to the graphic right above it. It looks the same from the street, but at the assessor level or at the property owner level, there is a difference. So these are some preliminary results of an ongoing survey the city has right now open. And we have reached out to some stakeholders in the housing industry, including the Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities, the Tri-City Realtor Association, Habitat for Humanity, Benton Franklin Human Services, and numerous other realtors in the community to provide input on how Pasco can utilize House Bill 1923 to increase housing options for residents today and specifically in the future. This slide shows that right now, 57% of the responses indicate that housing prices are forcing members to seek housing outside of Pasco. And that number is 50% for rental pricing, rental prices. 95% of responses indicated that more housing options are necessary in Pasco. There's a breakdown of the chart below that shows the the strongly agree, somewhat agree, not share, somewhat disagree, strongly disagree with allowing duplexes and triplexes in the city. There is an interest in these unit types, 77% strongly or somewhat agree that there is an interest in duplexes. 63% strongly or somewhat agree with the triplexes and fourplexes in the City of Pasco. And again, 95% of the responses so far have indicated that more housing options are necessary in the city. So some considerations for staff and definitely for the Planning Commission and as a public hearing, members of the public, that staff will be taking some ongoing evaluation with the Department of Public Works here at the city to identify any potential utility constraints specifically with sewer where some of these units may not, the capacity may be a challenge. We also want to take a close look at our existing development standards and take a look to see if more than just the units permitted, but also frontages and lot sizes need to be reevaluated. We do want to take the results when the surveys closed, take a look at those results and identify where Pasco can make some improvements or changes along with public comments. Again, ensure compliance with the Growth Management Act, our own comprehensive plan, our Pasco City Council goals, the home consortium, consolidated plan, and any other relevant documents that the city's adopted. And we do intend to come back with a draft code amendment in December and January over the next coming months before submitting a set of deliverables to the Washington State Department of Commerce per the 1923 legislation. So, again, on the bottom, you see the existing zoning districts where multifamily and the kind of units that we've shared on the screen are allowed and where they are not allowed. The intent of this amendment is to reallow them in more zoning districts. So with that, that concludes this presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. I just have a quick question before I open up to my colleagues. So, just to, in the following steps, you talk about the survey and that you received 35 responses, so that was what we saw, in the blue and the purple?
Yeah, I think as of today, we've received about 44 responses. We've sent this out to all the major stakeholder organizations, so hopefully we can get some more feedback. Obviously, the more the better. However, in addition to what we get from this survey, we do have the existing National Citizen Survey that the city conducts every two years that has numerous metrics in terms of the community's interest and responses to housing options in the city, along with general best practices and obviously the Growth Management Act and our own comprehensive plan.
Terrific. Okay, so, commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns? Mr. White, can you let us know? Who's up?
It is Commissioner Cochran.
Hi, Commissioner.
I was out of clarifying, I might be reading this wrong, but as I read Jacob, the, what the bill, House Bill 1923, you know, the kind of requirements to take advantage of this, it says you, you know, you have to allow at least one or more of the residential zoning districts for these types of houses. And if I look at the chart that's actually displayed now, it says we do, right? So we have three zoning districts that allow these types of houses. So are you saying that we have to add more to be compliant or eligible? Or are we already eligible, but we're looking to even be more eligible? Term that right, because it seems like as I read this, we need one or more zoning districts that allow these houses. We currently have three that allow these houses. And so I read that as saying, yeah, we're good. But I also understand that we still have a problem with a large portion of the area in Pasco that can't have these. So I just kind of get clarification because it seems like we're eligible.
Certainly. So, right now, we are not eligible. The zoning districts with the question marks or with the, where we do not allow these kind of units, the, in order to be eligible to receive the grant funding or to be compliant with the contract we have with Commerce is to allow one or more of these kinds of units in one or more of these zoning districts, outside of what we currently permit today. So we would take a look at RS20, RS12, RS1, and R1 and try to identify where these units are more appropriate and where they are feasible, specifically with utility constraints. Now, not all three of these unit types need to be in every single zoning district. That's up for the Planning Commission and Council to decide. But it is an opportunity for us to take a look at where we have the most available land and try to rebalance the, I guess, the imbalance of where our housing is allocated in the city in terms of single-family versus multifamily.
Okay, so I think I understood the answer to my question is to be eligible, you have to go above and beyond what you already allow and allow for some more. It's not just to have, because when I read your, when I read the thing, it just says the House Bill requires that you allow these in at least one or more zoning areas, and I read that as we do. So it's more that we have to allow one or more additional zones.
Yeah, and to clarify, I should have added the full description in the staff report, but the second part of that action is in single-family, in residential zoning districts that only allow single-family dwellings.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
My apologies for that.
Terrific. Anyone else? Mr. White?
Yeah, this is.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Jennings.
Hi, Commissioner Jennings.
Has staff received any metrics or survey related to whether prospective homeowners are looking for more rental properties or if they're looking for more private ownership? Traditionally, multifamily is going to tend to lead to more rental properties, especially where they're located on a single parcel. That means that there's only one ownership unless their condo is out. Whereas the zero lot line would allow for private ownership of each residence.
We, not, I'm sorry. Yeah, so to my knowledge, the city doesn't have information about what the unit interest is from the home buyer or renter perspective. I think what the data, the data shows this is that we have an overwhelming supply, and although it's limited supply, but an overwhelming supply of the single-family detached unit, very little of everything else. So I do believe that when we start the effort on the Housing Action Plan, we will have to go back to the community and begin to do more in-depth and detailed surveys on the kind of units they are seeking. What House Bill 1923 legislation would allow the city to do is get somewhat ahead of that. Again, this wouldn't be the city building anything, this would be the city just simply allowing it to occur. And if the market deems that duplexes are in heavy interest, then perhaps we'll see more duplex supply. Perhaps we may not, but right now, we don't even allow it in most of our land.
Okay, thank you for that response. I just was kind of honing in on that it seems like this is really going to increase rental properties, not private ownership of property.
Mr. White?
I'm not seeing any additional green microphones.
Okay.
I have a question, real quick, if I may interrupt. Has there been any consideration?
Which commissioner is this?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, this is Jay Hammer, Commissioner Hammer.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Please proceed.
Has there been any consideration given to, or the impact of parking requirements as these densities increase on these lots, particularly the smaller lots? Is there any discussion about that at all?
We don't intend to revise the off-street parking requirements associated with these unit types. They already exist in the, in Title 25, I think 25140 of the municipal code, so those would still apply. So whether you're building a duplex in R4 or in R1, you still have to, you would still be held to the same measures of the underlying zoning district, which includes setbacks, height, the density itself, and the parking requirements. Now, I'll add that the consideration that staff is going to be having with their discussion that we'll be having actually next week with the Department of Public Works will be more focused on the utility considerations, the capacities, if there's any challenges that we should expect or anything we need to avoid. And we can certainly, transportation will be a focus of that as well. There may be some transportation capacities that simply will not allow more units, although I would also add that the zoning districts still mandate the density, so this doesn't technically increase the density. You'd still have to be compliant with that, it just changes the unit type.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
This is Commissioner A. Campos, I have a question.
Please.
Yeah, you had said that as a city, our percentage of multifamily is, I believe you said 16%. What is the percentage that we should be at or a goal percentage? What is the percentage that we should be at or a goal percentage?
I'm not sure any city has has that answer, to be to be honest. What what I would say is that uh I I do. When we look at that slide that has a comparison of just fourteen cities. And what I'll do before the December meeting is increase that list. So that it's more uh comparable to cities that are Pasco-sized and larger, al- along with those in our region. Is that we simply do not have a variety of housing stock. We've obviously been really successful at building uh single-family dwelling units as the region has grown. But can we can originally have surpassed this in the housing diversity options offered in their respective cities? And if you remember from a prior meeting, we discussed. Uh, we had a discussion on if we're building the right kind of housing for the economy here in Pasco. And that means taking into account wages, median household incomes, education. And transportation logistics in terms of are we providing the kind of housing that the local employers can support with their own employees? Um, and may not be our uh role to step that deep into, I guess, the private market. Of what gets built or not, but what we know right now is that we're not allowing a significant. Portion of what could be entry-level homes or homes for those that are seeking a downsize to be built. In the city of Pasco, and as Pasco has an increasing younger population and on the other side an increasing uh senior population. It may be worth mitigating now with a few code amendments first, dealing with some of the major challenges that cities. Smaller than Pasco and much larger than Pasco are dealing with today.
Thank you.
All right, so with the lack of additional questions or comments for the applicant. We will now open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. None, nobody's raising their hand? Okay, I was gonna say you can state your name and city of address for the record. But it does not seem that uh anyone is choosing to speak right now. Well, fortunately for you. The recommendation is that uh we accept the public comments on the proposed code amendment. And continue the public hearing. So there's no action to be taken, correct? Terrific. All right, thank you very much for that. Uh, with that, we will now move on to. Public Hearing B, which is also a code amendment. This is uh House Bill nineteen twenty-three regarding lot size average. And this is Master File twenty twenty zero zero two. With that, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. This is the action item number two of three. Uh, for House nineteen twenty-three, uh, the effort the city's under. Uh, uh, ongoing, and this would be to allow cluster zoning or lot size averaging in our residential zoning districts. So again, a little bit of background on House nineteen twenty-three. Uh, and on the next slide, a little bit more information on um the action items that the city has intended to adopt. And a description of lot size averaging. So lot size averaging, it it really is just a simple tool that allows parcels or lots to be subdivided below the minimum lot size requirement. So long as the average of the entire subdivision remains equal to or above the established minimum. And that's a, that's the key qualifier here, is that the average of all lots, of all parcels. Must remain equal to or above the minimum lot size requirements. So some of the benefits of this, of the lot size averaging tool is that it does increase the flexibility. Uh, for home builders, property developers, um, et cetera. Specifically where there's topographic challenges or environmental concerns, this is a tool that's uh available. Quite a bit in the Puget Sound, uh, in your Western Washington along the coast due to wetlands and other environmental considerations. Um, and 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 areas with uh topography issues. It does allow for some increased efficiency as you don't have lots that uh are either extremely large. Or unusable due to not meeting a minimum lot size requirement. It it may make it easier for infill development to occur. Uh, and also allows for greater flexibility in design and density. Uh, and specifically on the density, the the city does have sort of a zoned capacity. We zone for a specific capacity, but just because we zone for that doesn't necessarily mean we will get that or achieve that. And the challenge with that is when we don't meet our housing targets. So this is another effort, again, at the the rest of House nineteen twenty-three is to. Uh, increase residential building capacity by making some minor and modest modifications to the uh municipal code. So this is a table with just a sample of the cities. Um, that have either through Houseful nineteen twenty-three or just before have adopted lot size averaging or cluster zoning. Uh, so obviously, most of these cities are in the Puget Sound or Western Washington. I do know that uh most cities through their planned unit development or planned density developments allow some form of lot size averaging. However, and is the same with Pasco too, we do allow lot sizes to be averaged in our PUDs and planned density developments. But there's more uh leeway and flexibility with setbacks, heights, densities. Uh, which uh this is not going after, this is more of a citywide approach with some thresholds that would be applied to every zoning district. And you can see here that the populations of these cities range from towns under one thousand, uh, Bothell in the mid-forties. To some of the larger cities of Tacoma, well over two hundred thousand people, and you can see that Pasco. Its uh estimates in twenty twenty were just around seventy-seven thousand people. So again, this is another effort aimed at trying to get ahead of a problem before it exists. Uh, in a manageable manner here in the city of Pasco. Uh, back to the preliminary results of the Housing Choices Survey, again, ninety-five percent. Of the results have indicated that more housing options are necessary in Pasco. And you can see the uh significant interest uh with those that strongly or somewhat agree with allowing. I should say the flexible design standards, but this specific question was on lot size averaging. Uh, so uh, uh, there is some responses where they're they're not quite sure. But overwhelmingly, the input from the home builders, stakeholders, um, and realtors has indicated an interest in lot size averaging. This is a draft table of, or this is a table of a draft proposal that staff is uh sharing with the Planning Commission and public today. So on the left, you see the zoning district RS twenty through R four. You see the existing minimum lot size requirement. Uh, when you get to the R two, three, and four, you see the difference between single family or multifamily. That third column is a twenty percent threshold that would uh staff, uh, at least for now, is proposing to be applied citywide. And on that far right column, you see a twenty-five percent threshold. But those parcels must be within one-fourth or a quarter mile of an existing or proposed planned public amenities. Such as a park, hospital, school, uh, et cetera. Uh, the the type of places that every resident should have uh decent access to. So the goal with that would be to encourage infill and also to increase the amount of Pasco's residents with access to these areas. So on the next screen, this is a a really simplified version of what the city staff get. Gets when we receive a preliminary plot application for a subdivision. So we get a uh lot table or a lot description, so the number of lots with the square feet, the average lot size, total lot area. Uh, the total site, developable area, there's usually a right-of-way uh component, the number of lots, and obviously the dwelling units per acre. So this is just an example of the RS one, where every lot's required to be ten thousand square feet. Now, uh, the prior table that indicated that staff is proposing a twenty percent reduction or a twenty-five percent reduction. Depending on the location of the city. Now, what's difficult about trying to forecast how many more units. Uh, this specific amendment would allow is that they're they're almost immeasurable. Because every time you go below the lot size, you have to make up for it somewhere else. Now, most of our subdivisions don't have s- straight ten thousand square foot lot sizes or twenty thousand square foot lot sizes. Depending on the the part of the city, some are well above it, some are just slightly above it. And sometimes we see uh larger parcels because it's the only way they can get a lot because they can't go below it. Uh, so in addition to the threshold that the city is proposing. Again, where the average of all lots must remain equal to or above the established lot size minimum. There would be two specific provisions that really would sort of provide the uh the parameters to ensure that that neighborhoods. Uh, are allowed to develop based on their zoning district and land use, but also we we don't see giant discrepancies in the type of units and density. In our existing or future neighborhoods. So the two provisions uh that we saw used uh frequently across cities was uh. A that when you do want to use the lot size averaging, that there should not be a lot that's more than forty percent larger. Uh, than the established minimum, so that would discourage a very large lot next to a very, very small lot. And then the uh other provision would be that no more than seventy-five percent of the number of lots shall be below the minimum lot size requirement. Again, I I think if we look at this example that we have on the screen today of seventy-five percent of those. Or seventy percent of those were below the ten thousand square feet. The remaining of these lots would have to be well above that ten thousand square foot lot size. In order for them to still be compliant with the RS one uh mandate. So again, those are just sort of caps or 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 parameters to ensure that the neighborhoods develop as uh council and planning commission has envisioned. Uh, but the lot size average tool does allow for some of these lots to develop slightly below. But they still have to make up for that land somewhere else, so you have a little bit of a balance. And I think what we'd end up with is is hopefully more of a gentle um sort of application of of these lots across the across the the city. So again, uh, sort of a summary of of what the city is proposing in terms of a draft. Uh, you see the lot size requirements, the twenty percent threshold and the twenty-five percent threshold. And uh, again, to reiterate with uh both of these, but specifically the twenty-five percent debt infill. And increasing access to public amenities such as hospitals, parks, schools, uh, or transit routes. Um, that would be right in line with the comprehensive plan that was just adopted by the council, council goals, the Growth Management Act. Numerous transportation policies and guidance as well. So um, as staff uh looks to receive comment today from the Planning Commission, members of the public. Uh, we do intend to uh take the final results of the Housing Choices Survey. Again, meet with our own public works staff to identify any sort of utility constraints. Finalize the SEPA and environmental analysis of this proposed amendment. Uh, and come back to the Planning Commission with uh a hopefully a a formal amendment or recommendation in December.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. It is uh. It is encouraging to see additional options being presented as we attempt to meet the additional. Uh, size that our population will be expanding to. Um, with that, I am going to open it up to the commission. Do we have questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. White? Commissioner Cochran. We see you.
Hello there, I I'm here, yeah. Um, hey, so I just had a question about, and it probably applies to the previous um one we just discussed. On um, the duplexes, triplexes apartments. Uh, you know, one of the things that we saw a fair amount of frustration from the building community. Last time with the street connectivity one was the, you know, lack of input or they felt like they didn't have sufficient time to respond. Are there, my my, in general, I think this gives them more flexibility. And my impression would be that the building community would like this, particularly this one, because it gives them a lot more flexibility on how to. To, you know, carve up a a large parcel for optimum optimum use and, you know, more of an averaging rather than set. But is there, and you mentioned you're taking homeowner surveys, I was just curious, do we have a way that? Um, we are reaching out and making sure that we don't get the same frustration that we had in street connectivity on these. For when, you know, because obviously there's not a single building community at the public hearing tonight, because there's zero attendees and. But I would be, I'd hate to come up to December and say. Hey, we're ready to make a recommendation and move forward to city council and have a bunch of building community folks show up and say, we've never heard about this, we hate it. And uh, we think you should throw it out and start from scratch. And so I'm just curious how we're trying to mitigate those things uh this go-around. And again, maybe I think that should be great for them, but I'm not a builder, they may have objections, so.
Certainly, so uh we have been, uh, obviously, this is the first public hearing, but uh this has been an item shared with the Planning Commission. Um, uh, even before twenty twenty, as it went through the council effort in the fall of twenty nineteen. Uh, the survey was sent directly to the Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities, the Tri-City Association of Realtors. And uh, when House nineteen twenty-three was enacted by the legislature. The Washington State Association of Realtors actually wrote a policy brief in support of of uh any effort to increase housing in the in the state. I'd also uh would state that the National Association of Home Builders has uh numerous research and guidance for cities. Um, probably more aggressive than what House nineteen twenty-three amendments are uh proposing. Uh, but across the country, you see numerous cities trying to do what they can to uh. Allow for increased options for development to occur for housing, specifically a variety of options. Uh, not only just at the uh highest market level, but also at the entry level. Again, as Pasco continued to grow, that will be a ongoing concern. And and although we don't bring up the two thousand eight comprehensive plan much anymore, the two thousand eight comp plan itself did. Also have its fair share of policies at increasing housing availability, housing availability. For uh the community here in Pasco. There there's also quite a bit about uh preserving the exist- the existing housing stock. And I think what the aim of all three of these amendments, specifically these two. Uh, along with the uh land uses associated with the comprehensive plan. Um, that was just recommended for approval a few months ago, is is that we're trying to allow for more units to be built. If if the market supports that, obviously, the city's not gonna physically build any units, but we certainly don't wanna prohibit. Uh, housing units for new homeowners or uh folks right out of college. Or again, those seeking a downsize uh to have an option to live and remain in the city of Pasco. We certainly want to main remain, uh, have them stay here.
Thanks, makes sense, appreciate it.
No, all right, well, um, I'll just ask a couple of questions. So does Pasco have the type of topographical challenges that might lend themselves? To this sort of lot size?
Not many in our present urban boundary. I I think as we look toward expansion uh in in some form, that that may become much more of a factor than it is now.
Thank you. And um, my uh. My next comment is really comment, not a question. Jacob, it was so helpful with the last uh code amendment to see. Um, those photos of the triplexes, I'm wondering if you can add any sort of imagery. Um, or depiction of what having this uh mix of. Uh, lots would actually look like to help us understand it better. That was my last comment. And uh, Commissioner Myron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and uh thanks staff for this presentation. This looks like a a, an effective tool for uh flexibility and development. I'm just curious, based on the land that's available today. Um, you you know, would you probably expect to see more of these developments in the lower-density areas? Just because that that kind of zoning uh is available and is more likely to be developed? Are are you less likely to see that in the in the denser developments? Uh, does this tool kind of lose its effectiveness over time as as land gets developed? And there there just isn't that option to use this anymore?
I I think initially it might, uh, obviously, we don't have a lot of supply, uh, land supply in our higher-density areas. I think um, I think it was ninety-five percent of the vacant lands we have residentially are for low density. So I think initially this might be, uh, is obviously gonna be more used in the low-density land uses. And and I think in some of the. And and I think in some of the troubling areas, uh, you may remember that uh, I think in early twenty nineteen, the planning commission and council adopted. The shared street frontage ordinance, which uh, we actually had two uh. Projects that are in construction right now utilizing the shared street frontage, which was uh, staff's attempt. To try to uh, allow more flexibility for a large or for residential lots to be developed without public street frontage because of the. Either prior planning practices or or odd shaped lots, uh, to- topography like a right of way, it it could be a myriad of things. I think when you start to put uh. And a ma- uh, a tool like the shared tree frontage. Uh, in combination with what we've done with increasing the variety of land uses in the uh, comprehensive plan. And uh, the item we just heard about uh, allowing more unit types uh, and this item itself at allowing lot size averaging. I I think staff's intent is just to make it a little bit easier and less of a challenge. For reasonable and modest uh, developments to be uh. Uh, to be approved here in the city of Pasco. Right now, if you're short by a hundred square feet, then that's one unit that's gone. We have an average household size of three point one six or so, so that's three point or so. Uh, residents of City Pasco that do not have a house to reside in that will have to go elsewhere. And as we look to uh, hopefully reduce the expansion into uh. Ag lands and and resource lands north of the city and preserve our agricultural economy. Obviously, anything we can do at the city to encourage more efficient land patterns uh, would be in our uh, our long term interest.
And Commissioner Myron, just coincidentally, um. Mister Gonzalez mentioned two uh, developments that have taken advantage of the shared frontage. One is in the larger single fa- family lot, uh, or zoning district of RS twelve and one is in the uh, R. Three zoning district, I believe.
Oh, it's really interesting insights and I I appreciate the explanation, Mister Gonzalez, and and thank you, Mister White.
Alright, Mister White, any other? Alright, so um, with no more input from commissioners, I will. Now open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. I said that for nothing. Alright, it is not necessary to close. The public hearing because the recommendation is that these comments are accepted. And we continue the public hearing to the December twentieth Planning Commission meeting. With that, uh, we are now going to move on to the next item, which is a workshop. On the code amendment regarding sign code. This is master file CA twenty nineteen zero zero two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and this uh, this isn't uh, very complicated tonight. Uh. There's no action required by the commission, but um, you have the second draft in front of you of the uh. Restructured sign code that uh, our consultant has been working on. She has taken the existing sign code contained in the Pasco municipal code, I think it's title seventeen. And completely revised it so that it makes sense from both the. Um, a substance uh, perspective and an organizational perspective. Um, they were, well, the whole thing was revised. I was gonna say many issues were revised, but all issues were revised. Into the uh, format that you're seeing tonight. The commission's in a bit of a vacuum because um. Uh, there's really not a lot to go over at this point. Uh, there are some uh, random questions contained in the uh. Consultant draft. Uh, those will certainly be revisited during phase two, which uh, the city has requested funding in this budget process. To begin in twenty twenty-one. Um, and uh, I think the thornier issues once we get into the uh, the year will be, of course. Sign size, quantity, um, what's allowed. You might notice that uh, on um. Page seventeen of the draft, there's a special note that uh, the portion of the sign code dealing with murals. Will be specifically looked at a little bit outside this process, more in line with our downtown master plan. Uh, but that might jump out ahead in 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 some fashion. We do intend to uh, form an advisory committee. Hopefully, uh, we'll have uh, at least several commission members. That will want to take part in that, along with citizens and industry groups. And there's, uh, I think we even have a waiting list right now of. Three or four people that would uh, or at least at one point cared to take part in that. So I don't wanna belabor this, but uh, I would certainly offer um. Get to get this out in front of the commission early so you have a chance to read through it and familiarize yourself with it. Uh, tougher sledding will be coming shortly in this subject. And I'd be happy to uh, try to answer any questions or uh, listen to any comments the commission may have.
Thank you so much, Mister White. Uh, commissioners, any? Comments, questions? I got a couple. Okay, so um, one question I had on uh. Just to give me some clarification on page eleven. And it talks about, oh, where did I see this? It mentioned something about flags. And, but now, oh, oh, I know where it is. It's a sign area. And then it said V under AV, the bottom. It said if element or or of a sign is movable or flexible such as a flag or banner. Um, and says something about the measurement. Um, I was just curious if. Things like flags, like the one that you see off of one eighty-two. Associated with the RV park. I mean, who doesn't love an American flag? That one is really big and I was wondering, is that the sort of thing that would be limited by this?
No, that is, that is not. Um, and I'm certain that there is an exemption for uh. American flags, uh, to be specific, but for. Um, signs, banners, or flags that are either of public information or uh, simply don't represent a commercial. Uh, message.
Thank you for answering that question. I was confused about that. And uh, 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 uh. I had one more, then on page twenty-five, we have the two pictures of vehicle signs. I was really surprised to find that um. Moving billboards are prohibited. Cause I could have sworn that I've seen those here in the Tri-Cities. I haven't traveled in a while, but. I thought I'd seen those here.
No, I've seen him here too, but remember, this is, this isn't PMC yet. Um, and uh, my guess is, and I'm trying to find it here, vehicle signs. Um, the primary purpose of such a vehicle is not the display of signs. So certainly if they're moving, that's fine. If they park, like many do, for example, on highway three ninety-five just north of the Blue Bridge in Kennewick. That would be prohibited.
Thank you for that clarification. On page thirty. We see uh, wall signs and um, when I'm looking at the l- l- lower. Left hand uh, photo that says window sign. And it was saying that window signs may not exceed twenty-five percent of the area. So does that mean that the one on the left would be prohibited?
W- well, I, it it's, we can't tell because we don't know the sign area or the area of the copy, but um. I think the intent is pretty much reflecting of what the code says right now. So. We we just measure each window and just simply divide it by four to get the. Rectangle, let's say, or triangle that that can be accompanied or enclosed by the sign message. So it depends on the measurements and.
Okay, I'm just asking, cause I've seen some businesses where they have this sign take up the whole.
Yeah, we do. We have them.
Okay, so that's currently against code.
Yes, and that, and but, and again, coincidentally, um. It was enforced last summer and the uh. Subject of the enforcement of, and rightfully, was very indignant about the signs that. Also took up the entire window that weren't a matter of code enforcement. So code enforcement has been contacting businesses. Um, and informing them of the twenty-five percent regulation. And you'll see a lot of difference. It's made quite a bit of difference downtown. I I actually can think of a furniture store on Lewis that is still out of compliance, but. That's all that comes to mind right now.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking in particular about. Downtown or central Pasco, um, and then. Um, I know in in working with a lot of different main streets, how uh. How we wanna be culturally competent, but at the same time respect. Certain uh, codes and regulations. So that came to mind for me. Um, my mom, mom, oh, and then on page forty-five. I got, I gotta tell you, this was really ex- an exciting read for me last night, okay, cause I made a lot of notes, okay? So, election event, and I know Jay Campos is probably. Chomping at the bit, given his comments at the end of um, our our last meeting. Um, so D, signs to be placed within the periphery of the public roadway. Um, but. There was something that was saying uh, these signs, I can't remember where I read it, can't be a distraction. And um, so it was making me think about, again, going back to one eighty-two. Uh, between road one hundred and road sixty-eight. On the south side of the street, there are a series of political signs. I cannot read them. Cause of the way that they are angled. I can just read one word, which is repeated on several of them. To me, the positioning of signs is also, that that can be a danger. Right? If I were to sit there and really try and read what it was saying, which I think the person who printed the sign would want it to say. So.
We just talked about that before the meeting started. Um. The and and actually, those are political signs and they need to go because it's been ten days after the election. Uh, and we'll be contacting DNR, who's the property owner in that case. And it's a combination of not only the angle, but the coloring of the sign makes it impossible to read. Especially when you're traveling at sixty-nine and a half miles per hour like I do on that stretch of road, and it is dangerous. It's very dangerous, actually.
Well, I am um, glad that I am on top of all these things. So while I was um, going through my comments, has anyone else raised their hand? I'm sorry, whom? Oh, Commissioner Cochran, please.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious. I mean, I, I, uh, this was a great read for me too, so I. The one thing that kind of occurred to me is that when kind of the background information for it is a S- US Supreme Court decision that was really focused on. Content neutrality um, of temporary directional signs. And it seems like this is much more comprehensive than. The the Supreme Court decision, and I'm just curious, is that because the consultants are saying. Well, it's got much broader scope and this it, in this case, it was a directional sign, but it could be any sign because. I'm I'm kinda curious of why we would go through such a comprehensive sign code update. Um, for every kind of sign versus this decision was simply about directional signs or am I just not reading that right?
Um, hmm, I'm I'm not sure I understand that that particular question. Uh. The Supreme Court decision was related to uh, sp- speech uh, uh, in essence, and it was, I believe, on a temporary directional sign. But the Pasco sign code is simply not workable. Um, it it is confusing, it's it's contradicts itself. And it's been on uh, the department's to-do list for many years, prior even to the Supreme Court decision. As an ancillary to that, the Supreme Court decision has been modified slightly. In two or three succeeding cases and the um. The parameters of the court have actually been lessened a bit towards regulation of commercial speech. So uh, they've, they've, I I don't know what the right word is, but the the original. Uh, Arizona case was tempered a bit uh, involving commercial signage. And uh, our, well, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think that that's kind of what I was alluding to is because I, but it it also would make sense, I think, as you introduced this. The first page says the background behind this is based on the Supreme Court decision, but it sounds like there's many more. Motivations and reasons, including the Pasco sign code being unworkable. And so maybe in order to, you know, as this goes down the path in the future, it might be helpful to to say, hey. The Supreme Court decision is just one motivation. We also think for these reasons, our current sign code is unworkable because. When I read this, I say, well, based on the Supreme Court decision, I don't see why. All this comprehensive stuff is in regulation is going on, but when you say, hey, our sign code is. Unworkable and has all these problems, then I can say, okay, well, that makes sense. But so I just, uh, that's what kind of struck me is the motivation. For this wasn't well established and it would probably help folks, community members or people that are attending public hearings. Uh, even council members down the road to understand the motivations.
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mister whom? Commissioner Myron.
Yeah, thank you, and I really appreciate uh, Commissioner Cochran's question because. This is an important point. I think the original Supreme Court decision was really based on two different signs that were similar. But their content was different and so the city regulated them differently. And so in order to avoid that. Uh, it would appear to me that that this exercise, this process of having a very elaborate definition of. You know, a signs and location ensures that we're treating all signs. That are similar in terms of their usage. We we treat them the same. The content is neutral. Doesn't matter what the content is, but by having very clear uh, sign regulations. We we can ensure that we're treating similar signs the same. I. That that's my thinking of it, maybe Steph has a different point of view, but I I I really appreciate uh, the in-depth work that's gone into this. It's a fascinating read.
Uh, again, thank you, and um, uh, Commissioner Myron and Commissioner Cochran, you're you're absolutely correct. If you want to. Um, administer Pasco sign code right now, you need to know what the sign says in order to do that. And that is, we don't wanna go there.
Alright. Mister White is looking.
This is Com- Commissioner Jennings, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Jennings, please proceed.
So I just wanna encourage staff to uh, possibly look into the window signs a little bit more and. Encourage possibly some flexibility. Based upon my read through this, every time that a window sign would be modified or replaced, a separate permit would be required. Is that correct?
Uh, I'll take your word for it. I I can't find that section right now.
My 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 thought per se is every time a business, say, has window painting done. Uh, per say a seasonal decoration or i- i- a more prevalent example are large chain. Uh, restaurants, every time that they slap up a new promo in their window saying, hey. This new burger's on sale for five bucks or whatever's going on. If that is a. If that is a trigger for a sign permit at each and every occurrence, I think it may have the opportunity to inundate staff with needlessly repeated permits. So I would just encourage to take some flexibility in the window sign provisions that may allow these large retailers that are frequently replacing these signs in many different configurations. Give them some provision where they are not inundating staff with repeated permits every time their specials change. But overall, I think this is an excellent start. So I'm, I'm very impressed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that comment.
Good conversation. And that's all we got. Again, this was just a, this was a workshop item. There is no recommendation that needs to take place or decision to be made right now. And with that, we have nothing else on the agenda, but I believe that we now are able to go to other business. Any other updates?
Yes, similar to what we, we did at the last Planning Commission meeting, just a brief update on where the city's at with both the urban growth area and Comprehensive Plan. The, the application was submitted to the Franklin County Planning Department in October. They discussed it at the Tuesday Planning Commission meeting at the county a few days ago. And staff will be virtually presenting to the Franklin County Commissioners, Planning Commissioners on December 1st. Likely one of two workshops or hearings before headed to, hopefully, their, their Board of Commissioners in January 2021. So making progress. And hopefully, we'll have a, more of a refined update for the Planning Commission here at the December meeting.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Gonzalez. And anything else? No, I am looking over at staff. It appears to me that we are done. So with that, any other comments or questions? Fellow commissioners? No. With that, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a lovely.